Time to get started, we will start with our Lord's Prayer and then the Plan for Belief. Let's all stand. Lord's Prayer, all together. Our Father.
To our end in heaven, thou be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. In this day and age of our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And give us not temptation, but deliver us from evil. The kingdom, the power, and glory forever. Amen.
All together.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody call this meeting of City of Sweetwater and the Commissioners for March 6th, 2023, in order at this time. You've had the packet submitted in your packet. Is there a motion to accept? The minutes.
Move to accept the minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise, motion carries. Roll call.
Commissioner Hughes.
Aye.
Mr. Moser.
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson.
Here.
Commissioner Stantz.
Aye.
The Recorder has a report for January distributions. Jessica?
Okay, starting with the general fund, page one, we have the employee and employer contributions for retirement, $28,285.31. Our fuel for the month of December was $10,593.88. Page two of the general fund, to Cigna, $51,666.99. That's the employee and employer portions on health insurance. Further down that page, $2,600 to East Tennessee Development District. That's for the contract to administer planning services. We are no longer paying that contract to the county, so we are not paying that to East Tennessee Development District. $2,805.54 ESO Solutions, that's a mapping program for fire department. There's also Great Southern Recreation, $1,3450. It's our final payment on the playground that was just installed at the England Park. Page three of the general fund, $8,000 to Mitchell, Emmerton Hill, PC. That's final billing on our audit, which was presented in the workshop last week. Page four, $48,295.95, that's our debt payment for Security Bank and Trust Company, that's on the T M O bond. Further down that page, $136,000 to Sweetwater Public Library, that's the annual appropriation and full to them and one lump sum. And then $9,256, that's a stormwater payment for the month, just to Sweetwater Utilities Board. And you'll see duplicate payments in there. We had to do avoided check run, misprinted when one of our printers decided to act up, so there's quite a few things that show in there twice, and if you look right below it, there's voids, so they're actually in there twice. So moving to page eight in the general fund, we made appropriation to Sweetwater Board of Education for $275,000. That was from the budget, that's just a portion of their annual appropriation. And then our retirement for the payment. In January, to TCRS, the employee and employer portions was $27,245.91 on page nine. Nothing significant in State Street Aid or Drug Fund. Tours and Fun, we did quite a bit of activity. That first payment on the credit card journal entry number 179 for $5,748.31. The vast majority of that was payments for different things we paid for for small-time Christmas, for the festival, and that came out of the Tours and Fun. Further down, coming out of the mural line in the Tours and Fun, we made three payments, $3,000 to add to the cabinet, $2,500 DMA events, and $43.50 to Jennifer Houston, and that was for the two murals that were added downtown this year. One is the Duck Park Tunnel, and the other one is on Walnut Street, on the side of Jessica Grant State Farm's building. The library fund is in there. If you have any questions, our wonderful library director is coming back. And nothing really significant out of the law enforcement fund. Solid Waste Garbage Contract, $22,949.70 was our expenditures for waste connection for the regular contract this month. Any questions?
Your motion to accept distributions.
Make the motion for approval. Second.
Your second?
Yes.
Any discussion? Any questions? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise, motion does carry. We will now open public hearing for two ordinances. First, to amend the beer regulation, ordinance number 1009. Ordinance number 1009. Is anyone present to make a comment? Ordinance number 1015, to accept title to the Biggs House. Is anyone present to make a comment on that, the Biggs House? In old business, John has made one change after speaking to a microbrewer who is checking into starting one. John, do you want to go over that?
Yeah, you, I don't know if y'all looked at the copy of the ordinance in the packet and the one that's out here on the desk. There's the pagination, for some reason or other, on the one that's in your packet. The pages were numbered R dash and the number, it should have been eight. I've changed that all the way through. That's not really an amendment, that's just the pagination. But I was contacted by a fellow that wants to open a microbrewery, and on page eight dash thirty, at the very bottom of the page, subsection F, originally prohibited the permit holder from drinking or allowing others of staff to drink or be under the influence of alcoholic beverages while on the premises. And he pointed out that for a microbrewery, they have to be able to sample and test their product as they're making it, and that of course is going to happen on the premises, obviously. And so I included that as amendment after the first reading, before the second reading, which is now. And then he also asked about being able to drink, to consume on his own premises while off duty. And my response was to ask, when is the owner ever off duty? If you're there and you're open, you're responsible for the business. But I did continue the amendment to provide that when they're not open for business to the public, that that prohibition doesn't apply. So if they had their own get-together for family and friends, or perhaps had a private event there that wasn't open to the general public, that they would be able to imbibe as well. If, I thought all that sounded reasonable, certainly the part about sampling and testing their product was absolutely necessary for them. And so if any of you, or all of you, think that that's a reasonable amendment, there needs to be a motion to amend the ordinance, the ordinance, before you vote on it on this second reading.
I mean, based on how it's worded, I mean, you simply stated as it has been worded, and I think, unless I'm missing anything, that that covers the intent of the law.
It still prohibits the owner, co-owner, operator, proprietor, or employees to drink or be under the influence of any beverages regulated by the chapter while on the premises. That's the general rule, and then it makes those two small exceptions that I just described.
I'll move to amend originally proposed ordinance, make the change noted in our draft here, we have a new subsection F.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed likewise, motion does carry. Now, we need to...
You won't need a roll call until this vote that you'll be having on the actual ordinance.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 1009 on final reading? Our charter requires a roll call vote for adoption ordinance. Please give her a vote to the Recorder.
I'm moving. Second.
Okay. Commissioner Hughes.
Aye.
Commissioner Moser.
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson.
Aye.
Commissioner Stantz.
Aye.
Okay, motion does carry. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 1015 on final reading?
I make a motion for acceptance of the title for the Biggs House. Second.
Motion's been made and second. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Hughes.
Aye.
Commissioner Moser.
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson.
Aye.
Commissioner Stantz.
Aye.
Motion carries. In new business, is there a motion to approve the resolution to apply for a CDBG grant with match for the community center? We talked about this in the workshop the other night. Do you hear a motion?
I'll move to adopt the resolution to apply for the CDBG grant.
Second. Before voting on this, I'm going to ask, I'm going to recuse myself for the purpose of possibly doing the work for the city, so I'm going to recuse myself from the vote.
That's okay. All right. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed likewise, motion does carry. We have received bids on the railroad improvement grant from T-Dot.
We haven't received any bids, unfortunately.
Oh, no bids.
Unless anyone here is present to submit a bid for the railroad improvement project, we have not received a bid. Teresa with T-Dot is here. Teresa, what are our path forward?
Hi, I'm Teresa Hayes, I'm with H R Engineering, and I've been contracted by T-Dot to assist in bidding.
Would you come closer so we can hear you?
Yes, sir.
You're way back there in the corner.
Can I apologize? Oh, shoot. That sounds pretty bad, right? Shoot. I'm Teresa Hayes with H R Engineering, and I have parts for everyone. I was hired by T-Dot as a representative for both the City of Sweetwater and T-Dot to coordinate this work. The decision was made to let these forbid, and obviously, we've not been successful with that. However, we do have the option to simply hire a contractor, accept prices, and hire a contractor that is already, T-Dot pre-qualified and already doing work within the State of Tennessee. According to Jessica, she would have to explain a little bit better than I can. Anyway, we can just have someone come and do the work. It's signing and pavement marking and some lighting installation, which we can have someone do, or if you want to use your local utility, you can install those, we can do that also, and you'd still receive the same reimbursement fines.
Was that a $25,000? What, I believe it was, was it? $25,000?
I think the whole project was close to $100,000, wasn't it? I don't think it's possibly, yes.
I don't think we have anyone in Sweetwater that's T-Dot pre-qualified, though.
For the lighting?
Yeah, so I think we would have to probably, we certainly have people who could do it, but I think T-Dot's pre-qualified less. Do you have any ideas?
Cody Phillips?
I don't, I don't think Cody is.
My question, and it may be a silly question, I just, out of curiosity, if nothing else, is there a special GC license requirement to actually work on railroad improvements?
No.
Really?
Because this is not actually on railroad, or for the railroad.
Okay.
So if it were paving, then it would get with them, call the shop, the tracks, and would be, would require funding and insurance and a contract with the railroad for a flagger, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. This is pavement marking, and so... Signage, trust me. Right.
So I'm thinking, maybe let me and Teresa work on this together and figure out, one, maybe Cody is pre-qualified with T-Dot, if he's on T-Dot's pre-qualified list, we could ask him about the electrical parts, since he's a little...
Thank you, yes.
And if he is not, he can get on it pretty easily, I think.
And then, maybe, I know there's a pavement marking group in Knoxville that we've used on T-Dot projects before.
I've worked with three separate ones in Knox County on different jobs that I can reach out to.
I think this is kind of a small job, and so they're not really interested in bidding on it, so...
Too much.
If we can find someone that's already won a state bid for some other municipality or county government, or the state, then we don't have to rebid it, we're allowed to use that same pricing, we're allowed to use them, so...
We've worked with a company called Duracap that does paving. I could ask them and see.
And we'll just, I guess, table this until the April meeting, and we'll try and, we do still have to award it to a certain subcontractor, right?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
We need to reward it, and we can reward striking to one, signing to another, and electrical to a third one if necessary.
Okay.
Doesn't all have to be the same party.
Okay. So I'll just move this to the April agenda, and we'll try and get some pricing before then. Thank you for being here, Teresa. I'm sorry you drove all the way up here.
I'm here to enjoy the lovely city of Sweetwater. I'm off tomorrow, and I will be with you tomorrow, enjoying town.
Go down there and spend some money.
I already am. I'm spending the night at Remedy's, which is very lovely. It's nice, so, all right.
Thank you.
So thank you all for having me.
Thank you, Teresa.
Do you want to go ahead and leave, Teresa, you can, or stay going. So we're gonna, you're gonna work with Teresa and get, maybe call Cody, and I think Cody, he does a lot of T-Dot work that the Utility Board's not qualified to do, so I bet you he is.
Yeah, we'll definitely ask Benny with local first.
Number 1016, ordinance has been withdrawn by the property owner for the time being. That was Rex Ball. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 1017 on first reading?
Make a motion to accept ordinance 1017 as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Commissioner Hughes.
Aye.
Commissioner Moser.
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson.
Aye.
Commissioner Stantz.
Aye.
Motion does carry. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 1018 on first reading? Need a motion?
I make a motion for the adoption of ordinance 1018 to amend the zoning map, it's the Flea Market property, from C5 to M1 on first reading.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
The owners are here, if you have any questions.
Yeah, we do have the owners here. Any questions? Everything...
Hi Bailey. Hi guys, thanks for being here.
Everything going good out there?
Oh, yeah.
You got everybody mad at you at Flea Market?
I don't think us, no. No. Maybe not.
We wish you good luck out there. We do everything we can to help you be successful.
Thank you.
We've had a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Commissioner Hughes.
Aye.
Commissioner Moser.
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson.
Aye.
Commissioner Stantz.
Aye.
Okay. Motion does carry. Roll call vote. We have had a lengthy workshop last week on the capital improvement plan, the packet included the updated draft. Does anyone want to move to approve the resolution tonight, or does the board want to recey or review it again in March? We had some questions about some things, I think, why don't, you want to do it tonight, or...
Hey, I just want to let you know, I made a couple of changes from the workshop. We added $15,000 in signage for the street department, and we've actually already ordered those posts, and they ended up only being $2,000, so I think that's project, $2,000 for 150 of them, so that's a project that can be done without having to amend anything. I think those are the only changes since the workshop. So again, we can pass it tonight, if y'all are ready to pass the capital improvement plan, or we can table it and talk about it again, and then pass it in April. We're still in the right timeline, as long as we have it passed.
What's the deadline?
Technically, we don't have to pass it till June, but how we normally do it is we pass it by the time you're presented the first draft of the actual budget. So if you pass it in the April meeting, you'll also be getting the first draft of the actual budget in the April meeting. So it still fits the time, fine.
I'm okay with waiting this, let's, just do this. Just one more vote.
Do one, one more?
One more, that's not a bad idea.
Table it till April, right? Finally, we do want to appoint an interim point of contact for the city for the street department until Commissioner is elected. I have been working with Richard, but if somebody else wants to do it, let me hear it.
I think the question just came up, and Richard, obviously, and your guys that are here, with wanting to wait and let the election fill the position, we just wanted you guys to know that any one of us would be willing to help out and be a specific point of contact for you guys. By no means did we want you guys, or anyone in the department, to think you didn't have representation to the board, by no means. So we just wanted to put this on the agenda to have a point of discussion for you guys. So we can appoint, you know, one of us to take that interim position, or you and your guys can kind of talk about it and let us know, but once again, we just wanted to reiterate that you can always bring anything before the board, and any one of us would present it to City Council. But like I say, we just wanted to go on record and ask you this question, and see what y'all felt.
Well, I've been appointed contact, right, Richard, we've worked together on a couple items, so they are well aware of the fact that any of us is willing to help. And Richard has got enough experience that I don't think he needs a whole lot of critiquing. He knows pretty well what he wants to do, but if we want to make a point of contact, why, that'll be fine, but he knows he's not out there on his own.
I could say, I didn't want anyone, Richard, any of the guys, to think that. I think everybody on this board felt the same way, but we just wanted to go on record.
I don't think it's a matter of doubting that he has experience, because it's very well presented within the city that he has experience and knows how to do those things. I think that if I were in the street department's shoes, and I knew I could call somebody if there was a problem other than something like that, that I would like to have that contact and that ability to do that. Like Sammy said, this board here is for you guys, just like we're all for the police department, fire department, planning and parks and everything. All work together.
Any comments?
All guys?
Okay. We appreciate it.
I want to thank every department for the job they did Friday with a storm coming through, cutting trees and getting debris out of the road, and it could have been a lot worse, but thankfully, there wasn't a whole lot of damage. Had some damage up in the park, all over town, including my place. I've been cleaning up limbs and trees for, since Friday. It's a mess. Richard, y'all got things pretty well?
We got none control.
Eddie, want to thank you guys for the work y'all did, and John, do you think we need to have side rain tests here in the next month or so, pretty soon?
Whatever you want to do, we just used them the other day, so, a few weeks ago, we were scared this, that they may run the basement tighter head, and they all worked in, so...
Well, it wouldn't hurt to let them know, you know, that we are testing them. Let's get together, and Jess, you can put it out on hyper reach. How'd that work for us the other day?
I was pretty disappointed, to be honest with you. I sent it out at, I think I texted Eddie at 2:16, maybe, or was it 3:16? Whatever the time was, like 16 minutes after the hour, and it was 24 minutes after the hour before it got past 10 calls. And it put a message on their website, because I was going to scream at somebody, and they said something about, "Do not call by," and it may take a while for this message to get out, and I was like, "Well, this is an emergency, that's kind of when we needed to get out quickly." So I was not happy with the speed at which the messages were going out. And anytime we have an emergency, most of the time, the whole area is under emergency, so it is going to be an overwhelmed system. So again, people just need to be weather aware and not rely on just tornado sirens or just hyper reach or whatever, they're, you know, they've got to take some responsibility for their own livelihood on that, but I was not happy with the speed at which it went out. And we never had a weather alert released. We were under a tornado watch, then a tornado warning from Monroe County, and the weather alert that is supposed to automatically go out never went out, so...
That's the one we don't control.
That's the hyper reach that we pay for.
Yeah, but we don't...
But we don't have any control over when it's released, that particular weather part of it. It's supposed to go out automatically when a warning, or flash flood, or some thunderstorm watch is for Sweetwater, they're supposed to send it out on nightly, and it did not go out. So we ended up just sending a manual message to everybody, basically telling them to stay off the roads while we got the trees cleaned up and the water received it, but not great. I wasn't super happy with it.
Is there anyone we can contact about it?
Yeah. We have a citizen who's served on our emergency communication board before, and he really stays on top of this and tells us whenever they don't send it out, when they should have, and the last time this happened, we contacted them, and they were like, "We're sorry, we'll look into it." That was pretty much it. So, I mean, I will definitely follow up with them again when this happens again, but...
I thought we was kind of hooked up with Madison or the 911.
Well, I think the county's 911 hyper reach did send out an automated message, but the cities didn't.
We felt too sorry for 911.
So it's not that the citizens weren't notified at all, they were through the county, but they are supposed to get one, we're just our jurisdiction also, and that one did not go out.
I can tell you, after 30 years of experience, any weather-related alerts will be 10 or 15 minutes, like every time, it's just...
Eddie, did, we talked about it some time back, about the call out at the rodeo, out at the hotels out there, did you get that took care of?
Yes, we didn't go take care of it. It was not getting made out, too. They were not, they were getting routed to McMinn County, and then it wasn't getting followed back up to here. So that's, they reassured me, we tested it, and it is operating right. It will still, yes, it will still go to McMinn County, but McMinn County will route it up during this.
Now, the weather alerts has nothing to do with that.
Yeah, he just told us it's fixed, yeah. It is fixed. And I went by the hotel, and I explained to them that if it says McMinn County, still go ahead and tell them what it is, and they will... still go ahead and tell them what it is, and they will route them to Monroe County. And they just have to repeat what the call was. And they told me there's no way of changing the system, but it's just how it worked.
John, we have those rodeos starting next month, don't we?
I haven't seen any dates. I know they came to the planning commission and asked for another round, basically another year before they build any permanent structures. And that was the agreement, was one more year, same kind of format, six, seven events. But they were working on scheduling and booking some of those bands. So to my knowledge, they didn't throw any specific dates into us. But, yeah, they should be starting up soon now that the weather's getting warmer.
We need to get a hold of them and get some dates, so we can prepare for it.
They usually have to come in and pay their fees and everything at the beginning of the year anyways.
They came in and paid their taxes recently, you know, everybody's paid their taxes. They came in and paid taxes, but I don't think they paid their fee if we charge them for use on review or whatever it is we charge.
Well, the planning commission, pretty well, and Sammy's on the planning commission, we decided pretty much if they don't start at the beginning out there by next year, we're not going to approve it.
But basically, it was, the first stipulation was we were going to give them a year or two to see how it goes. But after that, it's really going against the approved zoning, and it was only a tentative trial. So that's why we told them this past year, guys, unless you build a structure which meets the zoning, we cannot approve this anymore. The trial period is over. They, I mean, they were understanding. We'll see. Obviously, if they come before the end, we'll just have to take action where the other.
Four or five years, I'm gonna.
How many has it been?
John?
I started saying, third.
What else going on? Give us a report.
Well, just got plans in the mail today for Wendy's. Of course, site plan has been approved. They'll have to get their demolition permit from T-Deg to tear down that building, existing building that was B D and T Bank. So once they demolish that, their plans for the actual building, they'll be reviewed this week. And then they can start demolition any time, once they get that permit through T-Deg. And then they'll be building out there. K F C on sixty-eight, their building plans have already been approved. So they're ready to get it anytime, they're ready to request a building permit. We can permit them, and they can start. So just kind of waiting, waiting on them whenever they're ready.
I'll take one.
Sorry. Dollar General's coming along pretty quickly, so getting some brick on the side of that, it's looking good.
Looking good?
Yeah.
When do you think, John, we'll be on the deed, get the deed to the Biggs House?
Maybe a week or two.
Okay. Are we going to plan on maybe doing some cleanup down there? Or start right away out there? How, what do you think would be the best way to handle that as far as cleaning it up down there?
I mean, at some point, we're going to have to determine what use we want to go after, so we can apply for grant funding and things like that. But I think probably just assigning a department to keep it mowed. Either, I don't know whether that would be Parks or Street Department, or who would handle that. But we definitely need to take care of that, because we're going to have to start mowing it pretty soon. So other than that, that's probably the main thing that we need, you know, for now.
So as soon as we get it in the city's name, we start applying for grants, right?
Is there anything that we maybe need to look structurally on it that we could do immediately to keep it from deteriorating anymore? That might be something we need to.
Sammy, you know anybody that, or are you?
We, I mean, if we want to get a true structural assessment on it, and basically an environmental report, we can set that up. Or I can send those consultants to Jessica, for sure. And then we can pick from several one of those.
Do y'all think it would be a good idea to do that? Everybody agree?
I mean, just for the liability sake and covering the city, it would be good to have that type of report. And then we can take action on whatever they find as far as just the liability issues. I think would be a very good approach.
Okay. So we don't even have the, we just pretty well.
He'll execute the deed, and then once we have it, we can, but we could go ahead and get the names for it. If you were to send it, call me, we can go ahead and get them on.
Okay. In Oregon, Eddie, you got any?
Everything's going well. Like you stated earlier, though, I really appreciate what John and Fire Commissioners got going on the fire department. You know, them guys out helping, you know, cut trees and stuff like that. Street department is a huge help to have them out. They even made Facebook. There was some lady watching them, she was talking about how hot and attractive they were when they jumped out to cut the trees.
I was part of that group.
I wasn't sure if it was. Before you know it, they'll be wanting calendar endorsements and everything over there. We'll see where it takes us, but we're doing what it takes.
John, anything from you?
No. I think it ain't going good.
You do have full staff now?
Yes. For today.
For today?
For today.
Tim?
Thanks, Jimmy.
What's been going on with you? They've been wearing that new.
Oh, yeah, that playground part.
Playground?
Oh, gosh, yeah. They've been wearing that thing out.
We were lucky that big tree didn't hit our new splash pad.
Well, lucky, it barely missed. That's a monster.
I mean, it missed it, what, ten foot?
I said about, that's the one tree that I wish we hadn't lost. I'd rather lose every tree in that park except for that one tree. It was a beautiful tree. Gosh, it's beautiful.
It was close. Okay. All right. Thank you, guys. We are adjourned.